Wait. Call to order for a Watertown City Council meeting for May 5th of 2025. Please rise while Representative Byron Kalis, former representative from District 5, leads us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we are thankful for the day. We thankful for the sunshine that promises new life beginning each year. We ask you to be with the members of this council, those who are presenting. Give them blessings, give them good lines, good verbs, and be with us all as we praise you in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Manager Rob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Tupper?
Here.
Beeler?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Holene?
Here.
Jorans?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Shuddy?
Here.
Thank you.
Quorum is established. Chair will entertain a motion to approve today's agenda with one change. Unless there's any objection, I am going to create, we are going to strike the presentation 8B from the Watertown Regional Library. Maria is sick and will not be able to do that, but in her place, what we are going to do with council's approval is I'm going to be asking for Rob Peterson, the chairman of the Succession Planning Committee, to give a very brief update upon their efforts. And I would like to make that happen first, even before the open forum, because he's got some things to get to tonight. So unless there is a opposition from the council, that would be the amended agenda for tonight. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Any conversation on that? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, now we will move on to the presentation from Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, city management. Appreciate having you take the time to have me in. Just wanted to give a quick update on how the search process is going. We've so far done one round of interviews with a list of candidates. It's a good list. I'm actually very impressed with the breadth of experience and the depth of knowledge of the candidates, so I think it's going very well. Obviously, there's a few more steps in the process to continue with, but we're still getting good candidates in, so we want to make sure that we evaluate every candidate that, you know, has that interest. So we're still getting good candidates, but we started the interview process, just to let you know. Some of those have been eliminated through that process, and some of those are going to go on to the next round, and we want to get the rest of the candidates into the first round first before we do that. So I wanted to speak briefly, if I may, just frankly about how the process is going. I know there's been some scuttlebutt in local media, written, print, and online and things like that. I just wanted to quell the concerns, if I can, and help everybody understand that, you know, we've only been into this process for about four months. That might seem long to some people, but speaking from a corporate world, I can tell you that this process is actually moving along quite quickly, and we're very pleased with how fast it's been going. We've really gone through a lot of candidates and seen a lot of good talent out there. So I would just remind everybody that, you know, this isn't a sprint. We want to make sure we've got the right candidate. We don't want to make sure that we hit the right timeline. We want to make sure we've got the right person, so.
Thank you. And since this is a presentation, I will allow council questions or comments about this. And just open it up for any council member that might have a question. Councilman Jorans.
So the question in the media was, why aren't we letting the names out? And I'm like, I bet Rob would have a good answer to that.
So it's a reasonable question, and I appreciate that, Councilman Jorans. I've been through this process many times in the corporate world, as I'm sure many have. When you're going through a search like this, confidentiality is key, right? If there's any mention that names could get out, or, you know, people's lives could be put at stake, it's dangerous, it ruins the process, people get panicked, they tend to not participate in searches that aren't confidential. So we want to make sure we maintain that confidentiality and maintain the integrity of the process all the way through. So no, the names won't be coming out from the committee. We're going to keep that confidential, just because these people all have careers, they have lives, right? They don't necessarily want their current employer knowing that they're looking for a new position or an opportunity. So, yeah, that has to be kept confidential, and we'll continue to do that in the right process, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Councilman Danforth.
Thank you. Rob, the interviews, are those interviews occurring by your committee, or are those the first round that you're talking about, or are those interviews taking place with the recruiter?
Good question, thank you. Councilman Danforth, the recruitment firm has gone through and vetted the candidates to a certain point, and then they brought them to the committee for further review. We whittled that down to, I'll say it's a, it's not a short list, it's a medium list, and the committee has been interviewing those candidates. Yeah, yep.
Councilman Peters.
Rob, could you just expand a little bit of next steps, what happens after the first round?
Sure. So once we get through, so obviously, like I said earlier, we've still got new candidates coming forward, and we want to make sure that they get a shot at the first round as well, if they're worthy of that. But once we get through the first round, there'll be a second round with the committee, just to dive a little deeper on those that we didn't eliminate in the first round, okay? Because some get eliminated in that round, right? It's just, you'll find it's not a fit, or whatever. So those that go to the second round, they'll still meet with the committee, and we'll get a deeper dive on their background, their experiences, and start to hone in on that, so that we can get that down to hopefully a list of maybe three or four that we can bring to the council with our recommendation. Now, we're probably going to put a recommendation of, here's our, you know, priority, one, two, three, and four, but ultimately, it will be your decision, and so we'll bring those three or four candidates to you for your, I would imagine, your interview and your approval.
Councilman Tupper.
Mr. Peterson, you know, we've gotten a lot of criticism on the length of time, and I appreciate all the hard work and dedication you guys are putting into it, and you're doing it with the length of time for a reason, and I just want to try to make it clear what the members of the community, we don't want to rush on this. We want to get the best candidate for the, for the community. I mean, they are going to be our next leaders, so I do appreciate you, you and your committee putting in all the time. Do you have any somewhat estimate on timeframe, no?
Thank you, Councilman Tupper. I appreciate your thoughts, because I'm there as well. I don't want to rush the process. Honestly, to be as far along as we are within three, four months, I'm pretty impressed with how fast the process is going. I know that other cities of our size in the region have looked for a city manager a couple of times and exhausted their searches without being successful at all. So the fact that we are getting this much relevant input on candidates means that people want to have this opportunity. People want to work in Watertown, so I think it says good things about our community. I'm really happy with the process. I think it's going quite quickly. I know we've been kind of beat up in certain forms that were taking too long, but I don't view that as it's taking too long, you know? I think it took us a couple of years to find the right candidate for the CEO search at the hospital when we did that a couple of years ago, you know? And so I take this with a grain of salt, and I say, you know, we're not on a timeline, we're looking for the right person. Now, with that said, I will, I will say, I don't want this to drag on for the rest of the year, right? It was one of the reasons why we went with the firm that we did. The other firms were saying it would take a year. This firm said, we can get this done a lot quicker than that, and they're proving that to us, and so I'm happy with them. I would say a few more weeks to get through our processes, and then we can probably bring those names forward.
Yep, and then the reason for my question was just try to make a little peace of mind in the community that it's not taking longer than what it should. It's taken the proper time, what it should, to make sure that we get the very best candidates, so.
Yeah, absolutely, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, council? Councilman Danforth.
I'm just going to make a comment, if I may. First of all, Rob, I appreciate the work that you and the committee's doing, but I want to assure the community that, that in the interim, we have somebody that has done a really, really good job for us, in our CFO, in Kristen Bobzine. So we're not missing a beat here. She's done a great job, has done a great job of working with the council, and so this is a, it's a roadblock that we have, or a hurdle to get this person. We need to do it right, but the needs of the city are being met with council members and with staff, so I'm very pleased with how it went. So Kristen, thank you, and everybody.
Actually, Councilman Danforth, fantastic job mentioning that. I do have to say, things have been going great. I want to commend interim city manager Bob Zine, but also all of our department heads and all of our staff have really stepped up and shown how this city can be run very effectively on their own. So with that said, we still are going to hire a city manager, but I did want to say that. Just one question, and then I have a few comments. So you are, I just want to rest assure the community, you are very happy so far with the quality of candidates you're receiving, and it's not even done yet.
I am extremely impressed with the quality of candidates that we've seen and we've talked to. You know, we went through the process Friday and today with some of them, and very, very good candidates out there, great depth and breadth of experiences and knowledge, so, and from and from public and private sector. So we're getting the cross-section of the people that we wanted. I'm very impressed with it, and I'm very happy with the way it's going.
Perfect. Thank you. I just had a few comments. So talking about the timeline, as far as how long it has taken, I remember when we hired the first city manager, and granted, that was Watertown's first time, but I don't care how many times you're going to go through the process. You want the right person, and it doesn't take how long, I mean, it doesn't matter how long it takes to find the right person. But I know that we went on for 18 months, and granted, a lot of that was because we hired a firm that came in from out of town and didn't know anything about Watertown. So their first step was interviewing people in Watertown to get a flavor of the character. So that's one of the reasons why I want to commend the committee and explain that this is one of the main reasons why I felt so passionately about having a group of citizens who already know the community and can represent it to the recruiter right off the bat. So we're already adding that layer of security that we're getting the right person going in for the next time that we didn't have the first time around. And I want to commend the council and everyone on the committee, obviously, for going through that, but that is part of the reason why we did it the way we did it, is to make sure that we have people who know the community, know the leaders, know everyone who's going to be working with this new person.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think, you know, we need to give props to the entire committee. Liam Colhane, Scott Munger, Amber Dahl, Chris Carter, Joy Nelson. They've done a yeoman's amount of labor on this. It's great work. I'm very impressed with the quality of the questions and interviews and how they're going. They're all very successful people in their own rights, in their own industries. They know how to do this. I'm very happy with it.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any final questions or comments? Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Had to gesture for our city attorney to come on in. I will now open it up for open forum. If there is anyone here who would like to address the council on something that is not on tonight's agenda, now is your time to do so. Oh, did I not, what? I did the agenda.
No, yeah. I didn't know if we were doing presentations.
No, I still have to do open forum. So, open forum. And just please announce who you are, who you might represent, if it's someone other than yourself.
I am Dan Sire, the owner of Buffalo Ridge Air Spray.
Yeah, make sure the green light is on.
I am Dan Sire, owner of Buffalo Ridge Air Spray. Thank you, guys, for listening to me. So it was probably six years ago, I wanted to start operating an aerial spray business out of Watertown. I had been running out of four other towns, and it was always where I would run to those towns to take an airplane back to Watertown to service customers. I'm originally from Watertown, been here all my life, service customers right around the Watertown area, burning thousands of gallons of fuel, miles, and whatnot, and it was just a good fit for me to work out of Watertown. I went to the city, or the Watertown Airport. I was told that it was, that I was not able to operate out of there because of city ordinances. And so I sat in front of you guys, after about two years of fighting, kind of through the stuff, I sat in front of you guys and I said, look, because I said, well, I want to build a hangar. Well, you can't build it in the general aviation area, because you're not allowed your ag. You need to be over an ag operations area. Ag operations area was not built, and I was, then I asked, when is this going to be built? Well, we have a snow removal equipment building that we're building. We have a terminal building that we're building, so the answer was open-ended, could be seven, 10 years. I thought, well, this is nonsense. So I went, you know, further and came to you guys, saying, okay, give me a chance to operate out of a remote location at the Watertown Airport until you build the taxiway. Taxiway got built, finished last fall. I am under obligation this spring, or May, to have permits in place to build my hangar. I believe that the permits, last I talked to the city, Reed Peterson, he said everything's a-go, just waiting on fire, which I actually built a different type of hangar, which was way more costly, but I don't have to have fire suppression with it. So I was told that I have to pay for one-fourth of the water and sewer that the city put in, that is actually outside of the airport premises. It goes underneath the street. I don't even know what street it is. It's on the far east side, behind Duco. And the cost of that, split four ways, is $108,000 per lot. And talking, well, you know, so I am already putting money down on a very expensive hangar project, but I was told that there's no, the $108,000 has to come upfront, you know? And we're talking about a 20-year lease that I'm going to have with this hangar project, and I'm just kind of going through it like, well, the bank's not going to give you a loan on $108,000 extra on something that will never be owned. I mean, it's underneath the city street. I'll never own that portion. So I'm just coming to you guys to try to figure out a way that we can incorporate that into my lease somehow, that it's not a, you know, $108,000 added up to my, you know, already, what I have to put down on a hangar, it's just, it's going to get very, very costly. And I don't foresee you guys, there's four hangar spots out there for ag operators. If you tell everybody that comes to town that they got to throw $108,000 down before they can build, those lots will sit there empty for 30 years. I mean, so kind of what I was thinking is, you know, maybe we can extend that out, we can term it out, we can, you know, verbiage in some kind of an agreement, that if something happens, I mean, I don't plan on walking away with the kind of money I'm sticking into this hangar, but, you know, things happen in life. If that hangar ends up having to be sold somewhere down the line, in the termin, or, you know, verbiage of the agreement, then that lump sum, you know, if it's five years down the road, or whatever, needs to be paid, if the hangar were to get sold. I just, I don't think that it's, you know, yeah, it's just a lot of money to throw up front to try to build in Watertown, you know? So, I don't know.
All right, and thank you, Mr. Sire. And thank you for that. For open forum, we don't allow questions and comments going back and forward, but with your permission, I would, I do have your contact information, and I would share it with council via email, so that way I'm not saying your phone number out in public right now, or anything.
Sure.
But if you are okay with that, that would be what I would suggest for the next step.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anyone else who would like to take this opportunity to address the council on something that is not on tonight's agenda? All right, I will close open forum. Oh, sorry. All right, just say your name, please, and...
Zach Thompson. Interest in coming up before you today. As about a year ago, I think there was, an allocation started for the Lenco Bearcat. That's where I started getting interested in researching more about the budget and what's going on, and justifications for certain allocations, and how the public input has been considered up to this point. But I've also done a, since new technologies come out in the end of the last year, at the beginning of this year, was able to do an AI analysis to help streamline and accelerate a budget assessment of, like, trying to find, it's very good at data, data, I can't find the word, data gathering and explanation of the data. So other things that came out, because I wanted to have not just the Bearcat, and I'm more of a libertarian, so I wanted to, like, question, why are we quite needing a Bearcat, for one? And the second point is the, there was an allocation for a wide-area mower that didn't have any very specified or clear, I don't know if it even said what department it was for. It might have had that at minimum, but it didn't have more specifics. And what I saw there was $85,000 allocated to one particular mower. There was others in the 2025 budget book, there was others for different mowers and different departments. But this one stuck out as being far and above and beyond the average price for a commercial mower. Being in sales, retail sales, and working at Ace, selling, we sold steel products for a while, and I've left that job now, but that seemed really high to me, because I knew steel wasn't $85,000. So I was like, well, let's dig into this. Let's use the deep search AI, let's, because, I mean, I could have found this on Google, too, but it would have taken a lot more time. And what was found is that, that is a LaZTech mower, and it seems to be the top-of-the-line. And if there is any budgeting concerns, or deficits currently, or recently, why are we allocating the top-of-the-line model when other options that could be sourced locally and spent locally are possible, or potentially available? And the third point is the interest of the airport. There was two grants for about $7 million, covering a lot of the airport in the current budget, that's covering a lot of the current developments or projects. And there was projects in the last year or two advancing, and we've gotten a lot of good stuff with the new airport. I really liked what I see out there. But this was interesting, because the overall budget for that airport AIP project was 8.3 million, and the grants were 7.03, or something, 01. And why are we $1,000,000, $0.3 million over budget, when comparable cities have possibly had lesser, lesser expenses? Some other cities have spent two to three or four million on airport renovations and increases in advancements. I assume there's probably some reason and rationale to that, but I don't know if we'd had enough explanation of that. So those are my three main points.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. You're almost at your five minutes. Are you done?
I'm done, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on something in open forum? I'll close.
Mayor, I got a question.
Councilman Endurance.
As a councilperson who received this report, do I talk about that at the end of the night?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason for that, if anyone is curious, is we have had instances in the past where someone comes up in open forum and starts talking about something, and it co-ops the entire meeting, it disrupts the agenda, and then also, we start asking questions on incomplete and sometimes one-sided information. So there's a reason why we do it the way we do it, so I hope people understand why. It's for the integrity of the meeting. So I will close open forum, and we will go on to presentations. We'll first have Ryan Heiser of Watertown Parks and Rec Department come up and tell us about Team Up to Cleanup.
Well, I am Ryan Heiser. I work for the Watertown Park and Rec as a recreation coordinator. So a couple of weeks ago, we did our Team Up to Cleanup event. We had a bunch of volunteers, more than we've ever had before in the history of this, go out to the parks, the neighborhood parks, the multiple models of bike trails that we have in Watertown, and picked up garbage. We did it from Monday, April 21st, through Saturday, April 26th, which we did have one, I believe, that Thursday of that week. We got a little bit of rain, and so it kind of bumped into this last week, but we got everything that we wanted to get done, plus some. And, I mean, I do have some pictures here of the groups. Want to recognize all of them, not in any particular order, but, so we have the Lees family, Connington County 4-H, Midco, Luanne Thompson and family, Watertown Municipal Utilities, High School PE classes, Prairie Lakes Hospital, Big Stone Therapy, Cara Dirks, Watertown Christian School, Girl Scouts PAC 293, First Interstate Bank, Middle School Learning Center, Human Service Agency, Bridge Church, Light of the World Church, Emily Rozinski and Harmony Likens, and the Watertown Anglers Association. So, you know, I saw a Facebook post today, interesting fact of all the huge numbers from the city-wide cleanup. And, you know, just to give you guys an idea, we handed out the 50-gallon construction-sized garbage bags, when we went out to these groups and met them at the locations, and we filled, not every single bag that we handed out was completely filled, but on an average, we had 43 50-gallon garbage bags filled with garbage that we picked up, just around bike trails and parks. So it's kind of an eye-opener on, you know, the various different ways that garbage and litter can get out and about, and, you know, thanks to these awesome people, we got all that picked up. So I can't thank all of our volunteers enough for the hard work that they did. Sometimes windy, you know, sometimes it was misting, but they still went out and volunteered their service and did a great job for the community of Watertown.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, council? Councilman Tupper?
Just a big thank you to Ryan and all of his supporters that helped him put that together, but especially a big thanks to Ryan for getting that put together and your hard work and dedication to keeping our park system clean and green, so.
Thank you.
It is much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go into regular business. Item 9A is an approval of a professional services agreement for engineering services associated with the Calvin Industrial Park Lift Station, which is project number 2428, with Infrastructure Design Group, in the amount of roughly $9,000. We'll go to our city engineer, Justin Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi. This is an engineering services agreement for the Calvin Lift Station, or Calvin Industrial Park Lift Station. The area here in Hatchton Red is the Calvin Industrial Park. Right now, the proposed, there's a future lift station, proposed to be right here, along with a force main, which is this pink line. What this service agreement does is explores the option of this alternate route, which would remove three existing lift stations located here, here, and here. And so it'd be, instead of, instead of about 9,000 feet of force main, it'd be roughly 5,000 feet of force main and 4,000 of gravity. And that opens up some of this area up here to be developed more fully. The Calvin Lift Station project itself covers about 400 acres here in blue. This service agreement, or this professional service agreement with IDG is just kind of explore this option and see if it's feasible, and then the costs associated with it as well. And with that, I'll stand by for questions. And with that, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain action. Can I get a motion to approve the agreement? Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Now we'll open it up for questions and comments. Councilman Shuddy.
Thank you, Mayor. City Engineer Peterson, so is there like a, oh, you know, these lift stations, is there a maintenance schedule? Is there an annual cost involved in these? Maybe it's a tough question, but if we're eliminating three and getting one to replace, I gotta think there's going to be an advantage more than just, I mean, you know, a deeper dive into this as far as maintenance and unless they're pretty maintenance free over the years.
No, every lift station has, has maintenance. The, you know, it varies depending on, on growth and use, but, you know, every fifteen, twenty years, there's a major revamp of lift stations. And not to mention that it's a, it's mechanical device, so if there's electrical outages or other things that happen, then it takes staff time as well. The wastewater division is, would be very excited if we could remove these three lift stations and.
Follow up, councilman?
Thank you. Yeah, so basically this would be money well spent is what it looks like to evaluate this. Plus it expands, you're saying how much more service we have for that region. It would, it would, like you mentioned in the blue area, correct? So it's, this seems like it just makes sense to, to move forward with this, but thank you for your information.
Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. Justin, on this, what's the timeframe for them getting the work done on this evaluation?
They, they said between four or six weeks they could evaluate this and then the next step would be a design contract.
Okay. Because, help me out here, I believe that the lift station in that area is, is either inhibiting or delaying development in that area. And I believe there's people that want to get some things done out in Calvin Park. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So timing is important here, you know, to get decisions made and it's going to start with this and, and going from potentially from four or three, whatever that number is to one, I think would be, without question, would be a, a good move for us. So do we have any idea, whatever the outcome of this is, do we have any idea when the lift station issue will be done and in place out there?
My hope is if things progress, we'd be in construction next year and then probably towards the end of 2026, hopefully it'd be operational.
Okay. Because in the meantime, they're using septic tank systems out there, correct? If they, if they, yep, I believe they are.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. Justin, it might be beneficial for the general public to understand what a lift station is, what it does. I know that's not a fun thing to describe, but.
Yeah, it's, the wastewater flows into the lift station and then it's pumped out through what's called a force main. And then it, it goes to either another manhole that flows, gravity flows to the, the treatment center, treatment plant or like the pink line, it could go directly to the treatment plant. So basically it collects sewage. Yes.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agreement. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please find out how we vote.
Okay. Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerrance?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item nine B is an approval of professional services agreement, amendment number one for the building, for the bidding, construction, administration and resident engineering of the partial parallel taxiway C and taxiway B associated with Helms and Associates in the amount of five hundred and twelve thousand dollars for a new contract amount of six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. City Engineer Peterson, tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is the, the next engineering services agreement, it's the next step to this, this taxiway project. Helms has done the, the design, the cultural study and the survey that goes along with the first part of it. And this would be the next step. There would be, you know, after the, the project is bid, there would be an application to a grant. So, so this, this would be ninety, ninety percent FFA, FAA grant, five percent state and five percent local. I guess with that, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve this agreement. Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Peters. Open it up for comments and questions. All right. Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agreement. I'll just do a voice vote. All those in favor of the agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item nine C is an approval to reject all bids for the private hangar area expansion project number 2423. City Engineer Peterson?
Thank you. This, this, these bids were previously in front of council. The council had accepted, accepted the bids pending FAA grant, receipt of an FAA grant. We were notified that we did not receive that grant, so this is just a formal action to reject all bids. And with that, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to reject all bids. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Peters. Open it up for comments and questions, council. Councilman Peters?
Justin, this was part of the, this was funding within the bill that was passed and in the federal level? And then is that where this money comes from? Is that where it got denied from? The infrastructure bill, like five years ago, whenever it was?
I'm trying to recall. There's two different funding sources. They both come from the federal government. I'm drawing a blank exactly which one, but yes.
Can you re, sorry to interrupt you. Can you reapply or is this a one time and if you're denied, you can't go back?
I, I believe you can reapply. It had to do with kind of definitions within the law. It's kind of what I understood, that interpretation said that this wasn't eligible.
Do you know why it wasn't eligible? Or why was it disqualified or why didn't we get it?
Because it's, what's that? Yeah. It was a private, it's considered a private hangar, so it's money-making and therefore it was ineligible for the federal grants.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further comments or questions? The motion is to reject all bids. If you are in favor of rejecting those bids, you will say aye. If you are opposed, you will say nay. Officer Bob Zine, please find out.
Okay. Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerrance?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item eleven A is an application for a transfer of location of a retail on, off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license and video lottery license from R and L eighty-one Quick Stop LLC to R and L eighty-one Quick Stop Doing Business at just a slightly different address. We'll go to our finance officer, Kristen Bobzine for more information.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I am going to actually explain eleven A and B together. They are the same owner, just a location transfer. So yes, in front of the council is, there's no ownership with these. It's a transfer of the location. Essentially what's happening is at this location, this building is being split into two separate suites. So these licenses will operate in those essential suites. So all fees have been paid, notice has been given, everything's in order, so I can answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action. Can I get a motion to approve the transfer? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. We'll go Shuddy on the second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the transfer. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item eleven B is the same, an application for a transfer of location of a retail malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license and video lottery license from R and L eighty-one Quick Stop LLC Doing Business as Winners Casino to R and L eighty-one Quick Stop LLC Doing Business as Winners Casino at a slightly different address. We've already heard the testimony on this. I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action. Can I get a motion to approve the applica, or the transfer? Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Peters. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the transfer. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. We're going to do something slightly different. We have items eleven C through eleven L and they are all roughly the same topic. They are the same topic at different locations. So in order to expedite the proceedings tonight, what I'm going to be doing is I'm going to be going to our interim city manager, finance officer, Kristen Bobzine, and then to our chief of police, Toomey. And they're going to basically give testimony upon all of the items because of their similarity. They are all for non-compliance checks on the sale of liquor or alcohol. And therefore I thought that the testimony from Officer Bobzine and Chief Toomey could apply for all of them. However, I want to make something clear to council that if you have a question on any specific item after that, you may feel free to ask that question. So I will do the testimony of those two upfront, then I will take each one up in turn, having a public hearing. And so that allows anybody who might be working at that establishment or representing that establishment, owning that establishment, can come up and testify and ask or answer questions or just testify on their behalf proactively. That way I think we can just expedite things going faster. So I will first go to our finance officer, Kristen Bobzine.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the next items on the agenda are for violations received for their alcohol licenses. Each one of these violations was for the sale to a minor. State law does require that anytime a license holder has a violation, that they do have to be pulled from our consent agenda approval of their license renewal and actually receives a public hearing. It's kind of went back and forth a little bit, but we have kind of landed on, the council is requesting that for any new violation, when they have their first renewal, because we renew in the summer and then we renew again in the fall, alcohol versus, or malt beverage versus liquor, that any of those violations, the owners do show up to the public hearing so that the council does have the opportunity to ask any questions. So those letters did go out to each one of the owners requesting their presence. In terms of that, like any of these other ones, all fees have been paid and notice has been given, but each one of these violations was a sale to a minor. So I can stand by for any questions and then Chief Toomey's here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief Toomey? Councilman Danforth? Yes.
And I don't know who to, I'm just going to throw this out there, but when these occur, are there any consequences other than having to come here? Is there a fine? Does the employee get fined? I'd like to understand what the ground rules are, what the happenings are, the repercussions when this happens so that as we have discussion, I understand that.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, council. Thanks for having me in. After speaking to a couple of you, it was decided that I probably should come in and explain the process a little bit and why we do those compliance checks. So a compliance check, we do them typically two to four times a year. We vary which establishments, retailers that we go to and they are the best way to ensure that, or deter people from selling to underage minors. And I'll get into why that's important. But what typically happens is we select a individual who's willing to go in between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one. And the reason why we don't go below eighteen is because if we sent a seventeen-year-old in and they sold to, to that minor, we would have to arrest the person who sold it. It's a class one misdemeanor versus a class two misdemeanor. So it's less punitive for us to send in an eighteen to twenty, twenty, twenty-year-old. In this incident, it was March nineteenth, we had a twenty-year-old from Lake Area Tech with a Minnesota issued state driver's license go into the selected establishments. I don't select them, they're, they're done by, by my team. We don't target any individual. State law even says that we can't target any business within forty-eight hours of the initial sting. This isn't a trick. We don't have fake IDs, we don't have fifty-year-old looking eighteen-year-olds. We just select a minor who's willing to go in. And they're instructed to go in and show you their ID and politely ask to be served. And if they are served, they pay for their, their drink and they leave. It's all recorded, it's all video, I mean, audio recorded. So why do we do those? It's not a fun part of our job. It's just a responsibility that we take very, very seriously. Juvenile underage consumption is a huge social issue in our community, in every community, but specifically in our community. There's all sorts of social impacts that come along with that. Over the past five years, our average, our five-year average, this last year, we were forty-one percent over our five-year average for underage consumption. We were forty-six percent over our five-year average for underage DUIs. So as you can imagine, there's all sorts of consequences when it comes to juveniles obtaining alcohol. Over my twenty-five years, I have seen the tragedy firsthand. I've been to accidents, I've notified parents of their, their child being injured or killed. I worked a case where a young lady at Lake Area Tech died from alcohol poisoning. I've seen the behavioral issues, I've seen the violence, I've seen the sexual assault. I've, I've looked into the eyes of a teenage girl who had too much drink, passed out and was raped. So there are social impacts. You know, we might say, well, it's just kids being kids, but social norming isn't the correct strategy. In Watertown alone, over the last five years, our aggravated assault amongst juveniles up eighty-five percent. Our simple assault is up fifty-eight percent. Our sexual contact is up twenty-three percent. And that, that goes with national data. Nationally, there's over four thousand kids that die from alcohol-related incidents. So there is a big problem. So what do we want to do about it? It's a community issue that takes a community solution, right? We can't arrest our way out of this problem. That's, that stings and the police are just a very small part of it. We work with our partners, HSA, the schools, we, we really take serious the proactive part of it. We don't, we want one hundred percent compliance. When we go in there, it, it really disappoints me when we have one failure. This last time, we had seven failures. We typically do, don't do restaurants like we did this time, so it was new, but it was definitely an eye-opener. There is no indication that anyone that sold to these juveniles did it intentionally. It was probably an honest mistake, whether it was meth or busy or what have you, but the reality of it is the alcohol did get into hands of a minor. So we want to work with our retailers. Just last week, my community engagement team had a meeting with retailers and they talked about this issue amongst a, a bunch of issues when it comes to retail businesses in Watertown. So we are taking proactive steps. I even brought a resource that I'll leave up here on the table for the retailers in the room, but it, it does refer them to different resources, trainings, TAM training, ways to train your employees, ways to defeat that underage purchase. I understand there's fake IDs out there. Last year, we had eight fake ID incidents. This year, we don't have any. The quality, I guess you would say, of the fake IDs that these kids are getting is pretty strong, but there's still ways to combat that. If there's a suspicion that they might be underage and their, their ID scans, if they have a scanner or if it looks valid because you can see a hologram in there, I would encourage people to challenge them. What's your date of birth? What's your address? You know, challenge on the information on the fake ID because most kids won't, won't memorize it. But we want to work with our retailers. We're here as a resource. I have a whole team that's ready to help. So whether it's a resource or education or what have you, I spoke to Kelly Rumson today and if there's any retailers out there that want in-person TAM training, she's willing So, I guess in closing, there was no intent, and I understand mistakes happen. Again, this isn't a fun part of my police job, is going around checking on our retailers, but it's a responsibility that we have, and we owe it to our community to make sure that alcohol stays out of the hands of our youth. Just, you know, the legal consequences alone for the youth. I mean, you get a ticket, you have to go to court, you could lose out on scholarships, you could lose out on employment opportunities. There's a lot of consequences that as a person under the age of 21 that doesn't have a fully-developed brain doesn't consider. So, that's all I really have. I'm here for questions, but again, if any of the retailers want to work with us, we're a phone call away, and we're happy to do it.
Thank you very much, Chief. I'll first make a comment, then I will open it up for council questions to Officer Bobzine and Chief Toomey before I go individually on the violations. I just want to make one thing clear, and just for my own sake, and perhaps I react differently to the word than other people do, I am going to ask everyone to refer to it as an enforcement check and not as a sting. Because sting to me implies like you're trying to trick someone, and this isn't, you're not trying to trick them, you're just making sure that the enforcement is there on the carding and things like that. So, council, what I will do now is, if you have questions upon the procedure, either in the enforcement check or the procedure inside City Hall with the documentation, now is your time to ask these two questions regarding that. However, if it's about any of the individual examples of a violation, I'm going to ask you to wait for that specific agenda item. Councilman Tupper?
Just any comments? Or do you have any other questions?
I can allow some comments on this, but...
Mayor, before, I didn't answer one of Councilmen's questions.
Yes.
They do get a ticket, they have to pay in court, and I believe it's, well, I have it right here, it's a $264.50 fine that the employee gets.
Business stuff?
Nope. They get sent to the Department of Revenue, and their license is at risk if they have continued violations, so.
And so, I will go to Councilman Tupper, but again, please refrain from coloring the future conversation, because we don't want to, we don't want to color any of these good businesses in town. So, questions about the procedures? Councilman Tupper?
Well, first off, and I know myself and Chief Toomey and some of his staff have had many discussions about this, and if anybody knows me very well, they know I've always been an advocate for the youth. And one of the reasons for that was is, I was one of those troubled youths. And I know the importance of doing things respectfully, and like I say, it's not a sting, it's enforcement. And I'll agree, I don't think there's a single person out there that intended for their help to sell alcohol to an underage person. But when you tell your story the way you did, and you tell the increased numbers, and we see that in all crimes, increased numbers, not just alcohol, but drugs and everything else, it's mind-boggling. I mean, and when you tell your story about having to be that one to go talk to a parent, I can't imagine what you guys got to go through. If one of your enforcement operations saved one life, your job is well worth it. And I do appreciate everything you guys do, and it's, I guess, it kind of hits home to me, so I appreciate everything, and I appreciate everything these owners are going to do to try to correct the issues. So, like I say, I know that none of them are out there intentionally doing this, but I appreciate the help that you've offered to them, and I know they're typically try to do everything for their employees to make sure that they're well-trained, so thank you.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, I do have a question, but first, I appreciate your offer out there to provide, you know, resources, education for establishments in town, and you had a meeting, what it sounds like last week, a little bit on this, so hopefully there'll be some good fruit from this, if you will. One thing I will be asking, or maybe some of us may be asking, I know in the previous years, like last year specifically, you know, the question I had asked you, what are we doing to get, not as far as enforcement on our side, but as far as the establishments? What are we doing versus the year before, the year before that, to improve our techniques, or however we go about doing this? And so, I'm going to look forward to some, hopefully some insight from folks tonight that will be able to share their, what they've done, what they're improving at. There's still a human error, there's still challenges to work through. But I guess the question I have for this process currently is the fake ID scenario, I guess. You know, we're doing, we're doing it with a regular ID, you know, a legit ID, someone under 18. And I'm not sure if a lot of, are a lot of minors risking that coming in at 18, 19, 20 years old, knowing they might get checked? I mean, maybe they, maybe after watching this tonight, they might go, "Oh, wow, we got a pretty good chance of getting," I doubt they'll be doing that. But I just wonder if there is, what's the percentage, and no one can answer this, but what's the percentage of a teen coming in with a regular ID versus a teen coming in with a fake ID because of technology of the day? And I just wonder if there's a way of enforcement checking that potentially in the future? I guess that's my question.
Yeah, so there are ways, they have ID scanners. I've heard rumor that some of these that are coming from overseas will pass through the scanner. I'm not familiar with that, but the hologram, like I said, and even if it looks legit and you suspect that they're under 21, then challenge them. Retailer has the authority to detain whenever they suspect that there's a juvenile or a fake ID, they have the authority to reasonably detain the individual until law enforcement can arrive and determine if it is in fact a real ID or not. What other, Kelly Rumson has a sign campaign coming out, as simple as maybe just doing a sign that says, you know, with the changing date, and as of February 5th, 2004, anybody that doesn't match that, you know, isn't 21. So, it's, so you could look, quickly look at the calendar and say, "Yeah, no, you're not 21." You know, so.
Follow-up, Councilman?
Yes, thank you for that insight. So, there was, you mentioned there was eight, I believe, last year, eight fake IDs. Is that a good, does that show us kind of there's not a whole lot of that going on right now? Or, because if a fake ID was passed at an establishment, is it going to be brought to the enforcement's attention? Or is there more than just eight? Just eight were persecuted? Persecuted, prosecuted? You know, so I'm just curious, is that a real number to base off of what's really going on in the city? I mean, and it sounds like we don't have a lot of fake ID issues if it's only eight.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have a lot of fake ID issues. It does take some work on the, on the minor's part to get the IDs. Maybe we do, and they're getting by, but you know, you're going to have those slip through. And you can't fault a retailer if it was legit, I mean, and they got the alcohol, how are we going to know, you know, until later? And then if we did come across an incident where we found somebody in the possession of alcohol, and we found a fake ID, and we found out where they bought it, we'd probably go back and just say, "Yeah, this was a fake ID," and, you know, learn together. So, I've heard rumors that there's some retailers that feel that we aren't very supportive when it comes to fake IDs. I looked through our records management system, I did not find a single call where we responded to a retailer with a fake ID that we didn't do something about, so.
Councilman Peters?
I think I'm good.
Councilman Danforth?
You knew I was going to. I'm just going to make a comment. You know, years ago, when I first came on the council, when these things were happening, we just, on paper, it was an agenda item, and through discussion with staff at the time, through discussion with the council members at the time, we said, "You know, there's, there needs to be some, a higher level of accountability here on those that are the license holders that are running the business." So, that's what's gotten these people here today, is that request. Some of these individuals have been here before. You know, I will say that I know either of those individuals that are here today, or the business lease that they run, and I know that they, they have the highest level of intention and integrity to do it right. I know that. So, the question that I'm going to ask is, we do, as a council, we do have a responsibility. And Chief, you guys provide the assistance. We have, we have a responsibility and our requirements to the public for these types of issues. So, the question I'm going to throw out there, I would venture a guess, if we had every one of them come up here, we're going to hear the same thing, and it's logical that we would hear that. So, the question that I would have of those that are here today is, what are your thoughts and ideas about what this council can do in this process? I think that's important. It, to force somebody to come up here and say, "I'm sorry," that, you know, it's meaningful, but we, you know, here we are again with some people, and I understand it. So, I really, at some point, would like to understand what the thoughts are of those that are here, that have had a violation, or are in the business, as to what can this council do meaningfully to help in this process, versus just saying, "Well, you don't need to come anymore," or make you come here, and say we tried, and it was an employee error, right? I get it. So, where do we go? What can we do and still do our jobs as it relates to our earnings requirements, our policies and practices, and answering to the community?
So, if I may, Mayor, I do consider that all businesses in town is to be a partner in public safety, right? So, I depend on them to do it the right way. I don't believe in public shaming. I think I heard that comment by somebody earlier. I don't believe in that. The ordinance, I mean, the city could create ordinance more restrictive than state law. You could, for instance, require that if there's a failure, that that employee goes through TAM training, and it's a certificate, they could do it online, and it's good for, some certificates are good for up to four years. So, there's some accountability there. Yeah, I, other than public shaming, or whatever you want to call it, and, you know, the employees going to court, I truly believe that every, every business owner behind me wants to do the right thing, and mistakes happen. So, I would propose that if it was repeated violations of the same establishment, then maybe those should be the ones that come in front of you. But to bring somebody who had one violation because of a mistake, I don't know if that's appropriate, but that's your decision, not mine. It's just my opinion.
Councilman Jones?
I'll own up to the guy who said something about public shaming, because I'm one of the newest guys here on the council, and when this has happened repeatedly, I'm like, "This is really uncomfortable for us."
Yeah, me too.
And it's very uncomfortable for them, and our numbers haven't changed since how many years that Councilman Danforth talked about this coming up, that you need to come and see the council, and this is public. The ones that aren't going to be watching this are the youth that are doing the, they're not watching this stuff, unless they see the public TV and they flip through it real quick. And so, whoever's doing it is, it's not really getting to them. So, my question, again, is to you, Chief Toomey, or to those that are coming up, good idea. What can we do different so that we don't have this repeatedly happen every six months? I mean, this is, I don't know, this just doesn't feel right, and it's not working because our numbers are up. So, where are we going with this? Where should we go with this?
And like I said earlier, this is just one small part of the solution, but I, reinvestment in our youth is needed, social media campaigns, billboards. But I think, I do think that we, in general, a blue-collar town like we are, maybe has a less conservative look at underage drinking. I guess that's the most political way to say that. I would hope that the community all join together on this. Some, I mean, there's a social norming of underage drinking, it's just passage, right? Some people feel like it, well, they're just kids being kids. But once they're in our seat and are responding to those emergencies and seeing the social impact, their minds change. So, I do believe a united community, to solve a community solution, is what's needed. And that's attending the retailer meetings, that's coming up with solutions, that's putting signs at your business, at your counter, saying, "If you're a minor, get out, we're not selling to you," you know, and have that firm stance, and the message will get out. And once one business does it, the next business will do it too. And I think it would be contagious. So, I do think that, you know, with the open selling, there used to be that they couldn't sell on Sundays, and you couldn't get there at Walmart, and you couldn't get there at Target. But now, it's so out there now, it's everywhere, that, you know, not that I'm against that, but there's more work that we need to do on the prevention end. That I didn't answer your question, did it?
Well, the challenge is, is I know 90% of those that are in the crowd, and I can actually, I've known for a long time, and this is, it's uncomfortable for them.
Yeah.
It's uncomfortable for all of us, and you as law enforcement it is. So, it'd be really cool, because it's not the same city council as it was 10, 15 years ago that set this rule up. It's, it just seems to be different, and we need to think outside the box. I'm not always good at that, but intentions are right.
And we're looking forward to starting the hearings, but I want to give every councilman a chance to speak. Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Chief, for coming up. I, you know, when you hear those statistics, like you had mentioned tonight, it's not going to get better unless something changes. We haven't, we've done anything different. I think we have to consider this. We have to figure out, first, I don't want to point fingers at any of these businesses tonight, but the statistics show that there's an issue. And I think there's, something has to happen, and I think it probably is in the form of education. And I really like what you said earlier, I thought the same thing. Maybe TAM's training for somebody that's had a, had a problem with that. I know some folks aren't going to be happy to hear that, but I think we have to do something different. I mean, and this is one snapshot on one night, okay? How many times does this, could this happen? Every night throughout the city, you know? So, it could be much greater than what we're seeing here from this sample size tonight. So, I think we really need to put some effort into coming up with a solution or something to at least help. This is life and death. I mean, this is, this can ruin families' lives, and people can die from these kind of things. I'm not being overdramatic, you had the statistics. So, I think we do need to take a serious look at this, and we can use the, I think it'd be helpful to have some support from law enforcement, you know, to help us with, guide us kind of along the way with that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Okay, so Chief, thank you. Interim City Manager Bobzine, thank you. I just want to tell everyone how we're going to go about this. So, I do very much like the idea of coming up with ideas on how we can improve that process. However, we will not be talking about that tonight. None of you were informed prior to tonight that this might even be discussed, so I'm not going to ask you to come up with ideas off the cuff on something. I think it's worthy of a hearing on how we can improve our processes. We will do that at another time. I know almost everyone in attendance here, you all know how to get ahold of me. If you don't, just come into City Hall, come into my office. I'll be more than happy to hear any idea that you have. I know Chief Toomey would be likewise. We're here to help on anything. So, if you have ideas, bring them forward to us on things that we could possibly do in to help you. Now, that's not just on the enforcement, but that's also on the hearing tonight. I was here, it was one of my first meetings as mayor, when the idea came forward, like, "Well, where, where is the, where is the business that failed the enforcement check?" And the question just rose, and so, we then started having a policy where it was more than, it was relatively expected that you show up. I do not want to get to the point where it looks like tonight, where this is like a public shaming, where we're just going to drag you up here one by one to say you're sorry, because I know you're sorry. It is not in your business's interest to violate, I know that. I know that you don't try to do that. You're trying to, I mean, you do everything well 99% of the time, 99.9% of the time, and I will just say, I'll speak on my behalf, if someone came up on a random night and did an enforcement check on whether or not I did all of my work prior to voting on an agenda item, I would probably fail. So, that is not, that is just being human. So, that is not the intent, so I'm not going to ask you for ideas. I will, tonight, to come up with them in public forum, because that would not only just lengthen the meeting, but think about it, come back to us with ideas, and then we can address it both on the enforcement side and the procedural side. But then I'm also going to make something clear. The public hearing is optional for you. If all that happened was a human error, that it got very busy, you had an employee who just made a mistake, you've talked to your employee about it, you say, "We've got to do better," I get that, council gets that, you don't have to come up and say that. I know you're sorry, I know you're going to be doing better, I know all of that. So, the public hearing is optional, but it is still good that you're here if council has a question about your specific issue. So, you can come up and testify proactively if you want, you don't have to, because I want to show respect for your businesses and the good people that I know you are. So, with that said, I will go to item 11C, which is a renewal for Quick Stop LLC Doing Business as Quick Stop. I will open a public I will open a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? Is the green light on?
There we go. Larry Bachmann, owner. And we recently remodeled and we put in a new POS system where it cannot be bypassed now where before they could bypass it. And our employee did scan it, but it was a relatively newer employee and she thought it wasn't working. So she did it anyway, but, and we also let them know that if they sell to a minor, they're going to be terminated. So we're trying.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to testify on this item? All right, I will open up council action. Can I get a motion to renew the license? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, second by Councilman Shetty. Council, questions or comments? Councilman Shetty?
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate you coming up front to share what you're, what you're doing to hopefully improve, like a new POS system. And I think that's, I don't know if I'm going to ask every single person then when they come up, but hopefully this can just start the thought process. I think even before you came up, Mr. Bachmann, with what Chief Toomey has brought up, there's a lot of things in the works and there's opening up some dialogue and some communication to be able to do a, how can we improve in this? But I do appreciate your, you know, just making some steps to improve your establishment too. So thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Bachmann. Motion is, oh, Councilman Tupper? The motion is to renew the license. I'm just going to do a voice vote on these. All those in favor of renewing the license, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And I'm going to do a voice vote on all of these. So council, if any of you want to go roll call, just make that known, say roll call and I will do so, but just for the expediency process. And just one other thing, so if anyone is here representing an establishment, if it was an extenuating circumstance and you want to say what, you know, what you're doing to rectify it, that would be probably more than welcome, but again, you don't have to. Item 11D is a renewal for, for Amigos Doing Business as the Cowboy Country Store, number
Hello, I'm Annie Mog with Cowboy Country Stores. So I have a few things that I want to kind of go off of what Toomey had said after I had to explain kind of what happened at our store. So our employee was two days old and we already TAM trained and our serve all of our employees and we have for 23 years plus. I've been the instructor for 23 years and every single employee at our C stores and our liquor stores have to be trained and certified before they can work on their own. So she was certified, she did take his ID and she stared at it for 26 seconds, I think was on the film, but she didn't, for whatever reason, the math maybe didn't work out, I'm not sure. She couldn't really answer it when I asked her either. We have a WeCard calendar right there with the date and everything too, so I'm not sure exactly what happened and like I said, I talked to her about it and she didn't, she couldn't answer either. But I do kind of want to touch on fake IDs. It is an issue. I was the one that stopped your officers at our store. I didn't call. I stopped them, they were there getting lunch. I asked them to come in. I had like four fake IDs. They were very young and new officers and this was probably a year, year and a half ago, not, not sure in the timeline. And they really didn't know what to do with them, so I threw them away. That was four right there. I also know for a fact that fake IDs is an issue because I know of a 19-year-old in town who has one and I asked to use it on our TIL systems because I wanted to see how sophisticated they really are. They passed on both of our, they passed in our C stores and they passed on the R-serving app that we scan IDs on. And I have been trained, like I said, I've been training this for 23 years and like I would like to think that I could pick out a fake ID really easy. I'm telling you guys, this thing was, I am, like, this thing was spot on. And I asked where they got it. They order it from Kansas. And I also know someone else in town who is at SDSU and she also has one and gets into the bars all the time, never gets stopped. I think it's a bigger issue than what we realize it is. That's all, that's, that's my thought on the fake ID thing. I just think that, and my daughter, I have a 19-year-old daughter and I hear lots of stories and I just, I think it's a bigger issue than what we think it is. And so when I took it and I tested it and it passed, I don't, I don't know what else we can do besides make sure that the person standing in front of us is the person in the picture. And then you check all the valid things on the ID and you do your best, you do your due diligence to make sure it's right. So I mean, that's, I'm just saying that that's, and I did, I was at the meeting at the police station a week and a half ago and Kelly was there and we did have a little bit of a discussion about it. And I did ask Kelly where she thinks that the youth are getting their alcohol. And one of the things that she said is that we have a problem with parents saying, why don't you come to our house and drink? Because then at least I know I can watch you type thing. You know what I mean? I don't know. I just want you guys to know that we're frustrated too. We, we don't know what else we can do because we've done everything. We have it all. We have all the marketing stuff from Kelly and the police. We, I have worked with in the past Mayor Thorson and Kelly and the old police chief prior to you. We met here in his office and like we had a roundtable discussion or whatever about how we can combat it. I mean, we, I know that the Cowboy Country Stores are 100% willing to work with anyone to help the issue. So.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to testify on this for a public hearing? I'll tell you what, if you, if more than one person wants to testify, raise your hand. Otherwise, I'm just going to assume only one person at max is going to testify. I'll close the public hearing, open it up for action. Can I get a motion to renew? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, second by Councilman Beeler. Open it up for questions, comments. Councilman Beeler?
Thank you. This would be for Chief Toomey if you've got a second. What is the penalty if you get caught with a fake ID?
That has to be used with the intent of defraud, which spying alcohol is defraud. It's a class one misdemeanor. It's a mandatory court appearance and you could go to jail.
And what would you say, if you may, what would you say typically would happen? What are the penalties typically that are administered through the courts?
It depends on the record of the juvenile or the minor. It depends on a lot of different things. It could go as little as nothing to diversion, to fines and it's up to the courts.
Thank you.
Councilman Shetty?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't believe I'll probably ask everybody that comes up front, but I just, again, I appreciate these questions, these conversations, and I appreciate coming up with the cowboy stores with your, your, well, your years of doing this and the training you're doing. And so what I appreciate is hopefully we can continue to do what we can, like you're saying, what you're doing at Cowboy Country Stores. What can we do to continue this process, training, you know, doing this, teaching every person that comes in there, taking it serious, maybe letting our employees know that this is a serious thing? It seems like that's what you're trying to do in your establishment and it's probably, it may be the way with every, every other establishment that's in here, but, but it also sounds like, so as long as we keep doing that, but it sounds like there's a larger issue we got to try to work out in this community, which there's people that are working on that. So hopefully tonight, this, with this captive audience, we can, we can, that are all kind of, we have the same, we're all here for the same reason. We can hopefully work together and come up with a plan. So again, I just appreciate your due diligence in coming up and sharing what you guys do at your facility and hopefully we can all be inspired and do the same for this next year and maybe we won't even have anybody up here next year. That would be awful, awfully nice, yeah.
Councilman Danforth?
Annie, you said that your employee was two years old. I think that's part of the problem. She's only...
Two days.
Oh, two days old?
Days.
Okay, that's still even younger. No, I'm just kidding. I just want to make comment though, it's been some time ago, similar type meeting we got and I went home and I'm kind of a night kind of person anyway. And I decided to go on because the fake ID thing came up at length. And so I just went on the internet and I just started Googling stuff to see where it leads you. The Kansas one that you mentioned is one that came up.
Yeah.
Where you can go get these fake IDs. I was shocked, to be honest with you, that you just go on the internet somewhere and you find somebody will give you a fake ID. So it is real. It is. And you need to go a little bit older employees, I think is what you should.
Councilman Tupper?
I don't want to make a joke of this because it is very serious, but Mike, can you get me that website because I'd love to be turning on again, so.
Any further questions or comments? Before we go to a vote, and I would just say, I think the chief touched upon something. This is a holistic answer and I just want to say on behalf of the council, look, none of, we've said it before, none of us want to be here doing this because I know, for instance, all of the programs in town, the social programs, they would like to address this. The school system definitely would love to address this, LATC. I know that they are concerned about their students. It's just that when there is a violation, it comes to us. So that's just the procedure that we are following in this community, but rest assured that we know that it's not, it's a group answer to specific instances. So thank you very much. The motion is going to be renewing the license for Cowboy Country Store number three. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next up is a renewal of a license for Freedom Watertown. Is there anyone who would like to testify for Freedom Watertown? Okay. We'll close public hearing, open up for council action. Can I get a motion to renew? Motion made by Councilman Peters, second by Councilman Jerrance. Any questions or comments? Motion is to renew for Freedom Watertown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11F is a renewal for the Prop. Is, open up public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I think we all know you, Konda, but just to follow procedure, if you could identify yourself?
I am Konda Williams.
Oh, make sure the green light is on.
Assistance is always needed for an 82-year-old woman. My name is Konda Williams. I have the Prop at Stony Point. We've been in the entertainment business for over 100 years. I'm absolutely devastated because I am the one in violation. I always preach to my young people that work for me, we try not to have anybody under 21 working. Be sure and ID. We've got little notes everywhere. We have implemented a few other standard procedures that we're going to start following, but I was the guilty one and I appreciate all of your helping, all of us in the industry. And as you say, it's not a pleasant place to be. I feel like I've been sent to the principal. In the old days, that would be a tough thing for any student, but thank you for your services and thank you for helping us to get beyond this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Can I get a motion to renew? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, second by Councilman Peters. Questions, comments? Motion is to renew the license for the Prop. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11G is a renewal for Doc's Bar. A public hearing for Doc's Bar? Is there anyone who would like to testify? You don't need to? Okay. Close public hearing. Can I get a motion to renew? Made by Councilman Peters, second by Councilman Jerrance. Questions or comments, council? Motion is to renew for Doc's Bar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11H is a renewal for Watertown Brewing Company. A public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify? Come on forward.
Hi, my name is Don Walraven. I'm the owner of Watertown Brewing Company and I would like to tell Mike Danforth, yes, it did cost us $1,000. It cost us, the business cost $1,000 to the state. So it does, there is a fine and stuff for it. The employee does get fined too. There's, there's against the law for that, but I mean, there is a fine for the brewing company too, so we did pay $1,000. So you can see behind us that there's seven of their, that's $7,000 of income and then you take that divided by $3 a beer, that's a lot of beers. And you don't do that just for the fun of it. But deal is, is I also want to say something is, is this was like a, like a scam because the date was, he was 21 and 25, but it was a date, it was four, four months and you turned 21 in 25, but he doesn't turn 21 till September. So when you looked at it, you saw, you saw four and 20, 21 is 25, okay. Didn't realize he didn't turn 21 till, till, till September. So what I think is a little, do I do, I think you got to go out of this box to get a little bit, yeah, that's a little, you got to count the dates, days, not dates, days. That's how, that's how it was. And, and I really like to say is that the kid was, I mean, I didn't, I didn't see him, I didn't serve him, I didn't do anything. I would have fallen for it. I mean, I looked, I, because I, because now I look at it more than, we have a date, we take it right up there and look at it and add up the dirt, but I mean, that was, that's how close it was. And if you look at all the people behind me, they didn't just walk in with an 18-year-old with a black beard and get a, get a, get a beer for $21 and then talking about serving young girls and everything like that. I don't think that's our establishments are doing that. I think that is more at home and in public where with the parents, we got to start teaching that, drinking. My dad was an alcoholic, so I know what it's like to be like, live in that. So I understand that. But here the deal is, is you can preach all you want and I also do the PAC program at school. We find beers in kids' lagers that are only seventh and eighth graders. And deal is, is, is it's a bigger thing and it's not going to be solved here, but picking, and it is, it's just like picking, picking on, my employee looked at it, looked up the year, had 21, 25, no problem. Now we're going, now we got a date thing, it said, well, I didn't take it over to the date as of today's date and 21 years or what, you got to be born for this. If you look, it's even like, and now pick on the last lady that was here, Konda, she had so many years, she didn't, that, that $3 beer didn't mean anything to her. She didn't do enough for that. She didn't serve anybody underage and not knowing, not being sorry, it's like, it's like a sting. It's like, we all got stung pretty tired of. I've been in business now for 10 years and we've carded every single person that's came in the door. Every single person looks under the age of 35 and now we got to count the days. And that's getting like that. It's also getting the fake IDs. Minnesota, I guess, has one where they did theirs vertical and horizontal. So as soon as they get 21, it goes the other direction. That, that's maybe something, but then they, they blackmail, you know, they pirate everything and you can, you can pirate everything you can get. I mean, so this is a good deal and it did teach us a lot, did taught me a lesson about how to look at everything and account, but now we got to count the days too. So if that person was going to come in here and if that's a problem with drinking in our establishments, I don't, I don't see it in my establishment, I'm just speaking for myself. It's not in my establishment. As we served it, we broke the law and everything else, but deal is, is they don't come in and drink and everything like that. The problem is, is not that I'm going to say sorry, is that, I think it was kind of a sting. It really was and I read back, if you didn't do the exact, I would have been guilty. I would say, I, I didn't, I just took the 21 plus years and 25, yeah, it's no problem. I didn't realize he didn't turn 21 till September. And did he look 21? I don't know, I didn't see him, but my, my, my employee said, you know, they didn't really look at it. They just grabbed the ID and, and put it up to his face and looked at it and put 21 to 25 and that was it. Now, now we can count the days. So yeah, so that can of beer did cost us $1,000 and a lot more than that. I mean, it's, that's why I'm here. And yes, I would like to have, and I never, I've never do, I've been in business for 10 years, nobody's ever come to my establishment and gave me any, any ideas on how to look at, for, for a fake ID. Not one time. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying that that's my fault or anybody else's fault, I'm just saying we just never made the communication to do that. So I'm glad that's out there because I never knew that. I never, I've been in business for ten years and got a license from the City of Watertown to sell beer and wine and everything, and nobody ever said anything about a fake ID, just gave me the calendar. So that's, that, and deal is, like I say, it is a thousand bucks. Well, it costs us like thirteen hundred dollars. Because I paid the employee, I mean, if I don't pay the employee, they can't afford to live in everything else. I mean, it goes, comes around, goes around, still comes out of my pocket anyway, so what's the difference? Comes out of the Watertown Brewing Company anyway, so. And you can see behind us, there's, there's a lot of, lot of, lot of alcohol being sold just to make the profits of just, just one sting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walraven.
You bet.
Can I get a motion to renew? Made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Open it up for questions and comments. I, I will just preface just some, something, and Mr. Walraven, I understand your frustration, I really do. But I also just ask you to return to the comments made by Chief Toomey. If you think that the police department takes joy in busting anybody for any crime, let alone this crime, you're wrong. And they're not trying to, they're not trying to get people, they're not trying to bust them. They, they have a job to do by state law, just like anybody else. So I, I just ask you to understand that they're trying to do their job to the best that they can, just as you are, so, and just understand, you were just in this together as.
Yeah, I didn't take it, I didn't take it personally. I just thought, I just, I just thought it was almost like, it's almost like a gotcha, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, the deal is, 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 it's like, we gotta go to that extreme to, to, to get us? I mean, that does show you that we are doing something, are, are, not, I'm just speaking for myself, we are trying to do something about it.
Yeah. So anyway, I, I understand that, I just wanted to say.
Yep.
Defend our police department, because if you think, they've got a lot of really awful jobs to do.
Well, yeah, a lot of my friends are policemen. I mean, that's no problem, I understand that, I understand.
You know, to think that they enjoy this process is not one of those. So I just want to defend these people, because they are people as well, just as everyone else is. So just wanted to defend them. So Councilman Tupper?
I'm just gonna comment on, on one thing, when, when Mr. Walraven, when you say a sting, that would be kind of unfair to the police department. If, if you, if they never wanna run out and, went out and run radar, how fast do you think everybody would drive? They're just doing their job. Because if they didn't run radar, everybody'd be driving way faster than what the speed limit is. So it's an enforcement. They signed on for that, just like we've signed on to help them enforce the ordinances of City of Watertown. I'm proud of their job that they do. Unfortunately, you, you had an employee that made a mistake. And I don't think anybody's trying to make you guys look bad. I mean, you're not. You're all part of the community. And this whole thing is a social issue, more than it is, this guy's sold to somebody, he's this guy's sold to somebody. If we, if we don't, and it's not just Watertown. I mean, it's a social issue throughout the United States, so until we can learn to start addressing and educate people on the ramification of, of what we allow in our society today, it's, it's, I don't think we'll ever get by a year without seeing at least one of you up here, so, thank you.
Councilman Shetty.
Thank you, Mayor. So there's a, there's a, a story, it's not a true story, but there's a story of a grandfather and a grandson walking down the beach, and they, they see all these, I can't remember what it was, little, little starfish, is that what it is? Starfish on the beach, and as they're walking, they're all over the place. And then the grandson asked, the grandfather bends down, picks over, throws one starfish into the, into the, back into the ocean, and the grandson goes, "Why'd you do that?" You know, that doesn't even make a bit of difference here, there's all these starfish out there, you only did the one. And his response was, "Well, it made a difference for that one." So even if we can make a difference on one case, we should take this serious tonight. And there are, there have been, there has been some good information brought to us that we can look at, even having a calendar, if we're not good at doing math with, with the, you know, with the, the dates on a, on an ID, there's a, you know, even having a calendar right there, there's, there's things that have been brought up tonight to help, even, even would help me at the tail, because I get any one of us, especially if you're busy, and depending on the, on the operation and how much is going on, I get it, it would be sure nice just to have a quick glance, instead of having to do the math on every single ID. But there's, there's been some things that have been brought up to help the process, so hopefully, you can, some, we can learn, all of us, tonight, from this. And also, but, let's, let's take it serious. If it can make a difference for one particular case, let's, let's make that difference this next, the next twelve months. So just want to encourage us with that.
Any further questions or comments? Motion is to renew the license for the Watertown Brewing Company. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 11I is a renewal for Sioux Valley Co-op. Public hearing? Okay, thank you. Closed public hearing, can I get council action to renew the license? Motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Questions or comments, council? Motion is to renew the license for Sioux Valley Co-op. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11J is a, is a renewal for the Midtown Smoke Shop and Casino. Public hearing, is there anyone who would like to testify? Okay. Can I get a motion to renew? Motion made by Councilman Bueller, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now on the motion is to renew the license for Midtown Smoke Shop and Casino. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11K is a renewal for, I just like saying it, the Shamrocks and Edelweiss Corporation doing business as Dempsey's Brew Pub. Public hearing?
Nice. So actually, the Shamrocks and Edelweiss Corp, fun fact, is the Edelweiss is the national flower of Austria. My grandmother was Austrian, and then, of course, the Shamrocks, the patron of Ireland, and my grandfather was definitely Irish, so.
And Mr. Dempsey, I know who you are, but just for the.
Oh, and Sean Dempsey, owner of the Shamrocks Edelweiss Corporation, DBA as Dempsey's Brewery Pub and Restaurant.
Thank you.
So just gonna be really brief on it. It was an employee mistake for us, and, and for, for us, it was, her name was Mackenzie, or her name is Mackenzie. It was a case of bad judgment for her. She'd been serving for over a year and a half. We transitioned her to the bar to kind of take over, eventually as the bar manager, which was just, that did not happen. This happened, she saw the mistake immediately after it happened, it's one of those things she wished she could take back. I mean, the moment that we got hit by the enforcement, she knew about it. We all, we were like, like the moment the guy had walked out, she even walked in the back kitchen and she had said like, "Oh, my God, I didn't card that guy, and I think he might have been underage." And we're like, lots of things were said immediately after that. And then, of course, then we got the notification that we did indeed get a, get a, get a violation in that. I didn't fire, we, we had a meeting about it, a couple of me's were leadership team, we, that was kind of my first initial thought, but we thought maybe it'd be better to turn this more of like a teaching moment. Sat down with the team, and we decided a couple of things that we're gonna do going forward. One is, I'm gonna get everyone TAM certified in Watertown at my bar, not only just my bar, but also my servers. I have three servers and two bartenders that are already done that. Mackenzie's one of those people. My broking store, actually, everybody who works there is already TAM certified. My JM up there is amazing, so we're gonna continue to kind of get everybody and make this a multi-store thing. Another thing we're gonna start doing, too, is we're gonna start doing randomly monthly, random monthly checks. Where we're gonna find, I've got enough friends who have kids that are in that eighteen to twenty-one age, or eighteen to twenty-eight bracket, and go up there and see if they can get something. And that's something we're gonna kind of hope that kind of curbs up and keeps us on edge, so that we keep on having, you know, having this not happen. I mean, we've been around for twenty-five years, this will be my twenty-sixth year being in Watertown. We have never had a failed violation. You know, and I, and I really hope to never be here again for this particular thing, because twenty-five years is a really good track record, and I'm embarrassed that we, that we failed this. So in closing, I really hope that you won't see me again at this particular violation meetings. And I do appreciate everything you, the police department does. I don't take that personal, I very much, I appreciate, I appreciate keeping us in line.
Thank you, Mr. Dempsey. Can I get a motion to renew the license? Made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Any questions or comments? Councilman Shetty.
Again, just thank you for, again, all of you are sharing some of your, what you're doing to try to, to, to get better at it, you know, learn from mistakes, and just, again, what you've shared tonight, again, just more to add to the, to the resources and information to help get better. So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Councilman Bueller.
Thank you, Mayor. Sean, did you get a thousand-dollar fine as well, from the state?
I believe so. This would have been through, I want to say we did, I'm actually not a hundred on that. I know that went, that goes to the bookkeeper, and that's, that's my fiancee Jamie, and she usually doesn't tell me all the things, so.
How that works.
Yeah.
Anyway, if I could, Mayor, could I see a show of hands of anybody that didn't get a fine from the state? Thousand-dollar fine?
Then we definitely got the fine.
Well, if, if you're, if you're trained, your TAM, if your business is TAM-trained, it's half. So like, the employee, if they're TAM-trained, their, their fine is half. And if the business has the proof and everything that we've trained them, then our fine's a little bit less.
You know, I hate to ask you, could, could you come up to the microphone?
Actually, that.
The audience can't hear what you're saying, is that okay?
Yeah, I would, actually, I was going to encourage that, because.
Just state your name.
As long as we're going through this, I don't want to do this again. But if we're going to have a hearing about all of this, let's have it out, so.
So if you're not TAM-trained, or you don't have any serving, or serving or anything, then your fine is more. But if you have the certification, then your fine is less. And that's, that's their incentive, that's the revenue, I think that's the department revenues incentive to get you to be trained, I'm assuming.
And so, Mrs. Mag, what you said is, instead of a thousand-dollar fine, it was five hundred, and instead of a two hundred.
I don't know if it's two thousand and then down to a thousand.
Okay.
Or if it's, I'd have to go back in my book and look.
But there's some incentive to, you know.
Unless they've changed the law, and I'm not aware of it. Oh, more violations, higher the fine.
Oh, okay. That's also, I, I know something that the council has questioned as well, because that is, I remember when this first came up, it was, is it just a first-time offense? Do we have someone come up and testify, or is it just multiple offenses? That might be one of those things. Officer Bobzine?
So first violation, twenty-four months, if the seller, server's trained, five hundred. First violation, twenty-four months, not trained, a thousand. Second violation, within twenty-four months, even if they're trained, it's a thousand. Not trained, two thousand. Third violation, fourteen-day suspension. And fourth violation, forty-five-day suspension. And those are all state.
I also wanted to mention real quick, too, in the state of South Dakota, the law states, how can you drink over the age of eighteen legally in the state of South Dakota? That is if you are with your parents at the same table, and the business allows it. Now, like, Sean may say, we don't do that at all.
We don't allow that anymore.
Yeah.
Not since like, two thousand and like fifteen.
Yeah. But there are businesses that still do that. You have to be, I mean, there's certain stipulations for it, but you can legally drink before you're twenty-one, eighteen to twenty-one, if, if the bar owner allows you to be with your parents at that table with your ID, same last name, same everything. And you can't take your drink across the bar with your friends, you have to sit at the table with your parents.
If you go up and use the restroom, it could be, and like, like if the universe sent someone there to check right then and there, you would be in violation.
Yeah.
It's a horrible gray zone.
Yeah. I just wanted you guys to know that, though, because there are, you know, places, you could do that in town lately.
Thank you. Councilman Shetty?
So, yeah, just a quick question, what about multiple locations? Do you know if, if it's, what, is that per location doubling up, tripling up? Or is it per, like, corporation?
Per license.
Per, per license, so per, per.
So if a corporation owned multiple, it's per license.
License, got it, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing now on the motion is to renew the license. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11L is a renewal for Maverick Steak and Cocktails. Public hearing? I believe so.
We hope so.
Yeah.
I'd say, make it quick, but that's not my style. I'm Sabrina, I am the regional restaurant manager with.
Sabrina, would you please tell us your last name?
Sabrina Metz.
Okay, thank you.
So pretty much same story that they have, our server did take his ID. She read it and saw that he was born in two thousand and four, and it's two thousand and twenty-five, and didn't look at the date in the beginning. And so did not finish doing that math to make sure that he was actually twenty-one as of that date. Since then, when we found out that we were in this violation, we put her on a thirty-day probation. That meant that she could not have any violations either with law enforcement or within our company. So she couldn't be late for shifts, she couldn't miss a shift, not do side work, any of that thing. So she did make it through her thirty days, because she is one of our best servers and is immensely sorry for this happening to her and for serving him. After that, we did put policies in place, so we sent messages to all of our front-of-house staff, letting them know that anybody who's, looks under the age of thirty-five needs to be carded. That's our company policy, and just reinforcing it here at Mavericks. And then we also received a date verification clock from one of our beer vendors and posted that. So that for us is more helpful of seeing the digital time of when they should be twenty-one. So hopefully, it's just a reminder, instead of trying to do that math in your head. And then we actually are enforcing tips training through all of our locations. So we own six restaurants in the Midwest, and we are requiring all of our bartenders and our front-of-house managers to be tips certified. Right now, in Watertown, that is fifteen employees, and so far, seven of them, seven of them have completed that training. Moving forward, I just want to say to Sean, too, we looked at doing these enforcement checks ourselves. If, just as a thought, make them over twenty-one, just don't let them bring in their ID. Because if they're under the age, then we're just helping them commit a crime if we do serve to them. So that was something that we looked at. The next thing that we're looking at, which we have at other properties, as an idea, creating mocktail lists for those kids who really think that the drink is fun to order while they're out at an establishment, giving them an option that's a non-alcoholic drink that is a little bit more than a soda. And then the other thing that we've looked into is on our POS, we can actually do a date verification, so they would have to take that ID and type in the date, and it would stop them if they weren't twenty-one. So those are all the items that we've worked on to ensure that we're not gonna do this again.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to renew this license? Motion made by Councilman Bueller, seconded by Councilman Shetty. Motion made by Councilman Beeler, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Questions or comments? Comment, Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just again, thank you for what you have shared tonight, and again, I thank everybody for sticking around. Because technically, maybe you didn't know this, but you could have left after your hearing was done. But I thank you for, for being here to be a part of this conversation, to listen and hopefully get some ideas to move forward, so appreciate it.
All right, and I better make a comment while we're still on the topic, because that's following the rules. I did just get a text from our chief to me who did want to make a point. I'll just say, as a parent, I've been through this three times, well, two times with my daughters who have turned twenty-one. And at the age of twenty-one, you change your license, but you have to go and get it. It goes from a vertical license to a horizontal license. The person who did come in to do the enforcement checks did have a vertical license and not a horizontal license. So, just to say that the police were not, that's a pretty obvious tell that the police were not trying to bust, to sting anybody. That also just means that it was just an honest mistake, because I have been with two of my daughters when they got served with the vertical license, because they were of age, they just hadn't gotten their new license. But they were carded at the times that I went through it, so. Anyway, let's just take this as a lesson, that everyone's trying to do the best that we can, and we're in this for Watertown. And I want to thank all of the business owners for sitting through this. And thank you for the work you do for the economy of Watertown. I know it's a big job, so thank you very much. Motion is to approve the license. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, if you wanted to leave, you sure can.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Item twelve A is an approval of a resolution supporting the installation of streetlights on Highway two twelve at the intersections of Seventy-Eighth Street West, Sixtieth Street West, Fifty-Fourth Street West, Forty-Second Street West, and Thirty-Third Street West by the South Dakota Department of Transportation. City engineer Justin Peterson, tell us more about this.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a resolution in support of installation of streetlights on Highway two twelve at five locations, Seventy-Eighth Street, Sixtieth, Fifty-Fourth, Forty-Second, and Thirty-Third. Little bit of history, a couple of years ago, we had reached out to the DOT about specifically Seventy-Eighth Street, because that is a very dark intersection at night. And they, it passed all the warrants and they, they had it, have it scheduled, tentatively scheduled for the twenty-twenty-six construction. And then they reached out recently and asked if we would want to put in any more. And so this is a resolution that supports these five intersections. The way it works, the DOT will install them at their cost, and then the city would, would pay for the operation maintenance going forward. With that, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution? Made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Councilman Peters?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions for you here, Justin. So, did they do a traffic impact study, or did they do a traffic count, or how, how are they coming up with these intersections as a option?
I honestly don't know exactly how they determine.
Well, I guess this, when I, when I saw this come out, it struck me as odd, these locations. And just being some development work that we've done, this seems like, these seem like odd spots for traffic lights. And so if I'm understanding it right, it's each red circle I'm looking at here, so there'd be five of them?
Streetlights.
Street, streetlights.
Not stoplights.
Each one of them's gonna have a streetlight?
Streetlights, as, not stoplights, so.
Just lights.
Illumin.
Okay.
There was all those public hearings.
So, and they're looking for other suggestions in town? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, they, they, they question why not some of these other ones. I think what it is, is that they have to, you know, they have to run the electricity out to Seventy-Eighth Street, so they could pick up Sixtieth, Fifty-Fourth, Forty-Second, and Thirty-Third along the way.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Jurens?
Streetlights, not stoplights. Many messages today. We're okay. We're okay. I did go to look at the resolution to make sure it said that on there. It's, it's good. This has been discussed for a long, long time. I've been a part of a group message of, of local citizens that have been asking for these intersections to be brought up to a little bit more safer. A little safer, I don't know what the word would be, but they just visualize the amount of traffic, that's two-way traffic. It's already tough to come across these things. The only reason I understand it a little bit more is because I use them multiple times a day, the one by the rooster, and, and the other ones, and anything, I, I don't know what the anticipated cost is to run electricity out there, and I know there's a lot of streetlights that end up costing the city a lot of money, but there's, this has been vetted, the South Dakota Department of Transportation's had an engineer involved in this for quite some time, so. I'd, I have, I have her name, if anyone ever wants to, it's in a, it's in an email conversation, so, thank you. That's all I had.
Any further questions? Councilman Tupper?
All I know is when this came up on the agenda, we got former councilmen and, and State Senator Collinville, how we're excited. I know I worked side by side with him on, on a lot of work out there on Highway two twelve. He, he put in his heart and soul in that. It's been a very, very dangerous section of highway. Anything we can do to just give somebody that second chance. I mean, if it improves it even just a little bit, it's well worth the investment, so. I know he was pretty excited to, to see that today, so.
Councilman Danforth?
Thank you. I have long advocated for Seventy-Eighth out there, because that is, that's one that I use regularly, and it really is dark. And I, if I don't use the other ones, if I have this, if I did, I'd have probably the same concerns. I mean, it just feels like you're walking into or driving into a black hole, and it's hard to see that intersection, just hard to find it. So, do we have any idea, what's the, what's our expense per light per year? Per streetlight per year, just out of curiosity?
I did the math for, per intersection, and these are, these are just estimates. It's roughly eight hundred dollars a year. Per intersection.
Then I'm with the comments that were made, that I'd rather spend the money and, and provide a higher level of service for safety out there than what, you know, that area just gets more and more busy out there as development, homes occur, activities occur, so I, I'm, I'm good with that. On this, this topic, if I may, and I've, I've noticed this as I've been out and about here, but when you head up to the Arnold addition up there, to the north, that you have Highway or Road seventeen B, I think it's called, I believe, but you got the Prairie Hills Road, which is the farther north in the, in that addition, that has a streetlight on the corner, but the one to the south does not. That should get looked at, Justin, that is really dark there. No streetlight at that corner. So, anyway, back to the topic here, I, I'm, with that cost, I'm more in favor of this, so.
Any further questions or comments?
I will add.
Councilman Jurens?
They mentioned the name, yeah. Senator, former Councilman Villhauer has been working on this for a lot of years. And he was the one that was just nudging things along, and he had multiple people involved in this. So, it, it is, it, it, it seems to be something that's maybe been vetted quite a bit.
Motion is to approve the resolution. If you're in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Officer Bobzine?
Okay. Tupper? Beeler? Danforth?
Aye.
Pauline?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item twelve B is a preliminary report and approval of the twenty-twenty-four financial statements from the finance officer. Let's go to said finance officer for more information.
Thank you, Mayor. So, in front of the council is, it's required by state law that I give a presentation at the first regular meeting in May, so here we are. I will go over just kind of breaking down where we're preliminary sitting for twenty-four. The auditors are here, so we are currently in the audit process, and we will still do our full annual report that we normally do. But this is a look at the preliminaries. So, in terms of the general fund, this would be where we would sit with our general fund and the capital improvement fund. Our sales tax revenue for the year did increase by one point one percent. That rounds out to about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollar increase for sales tax revenue. The general fund did end healthy. We increased our fund balance by around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is always good when we're adding to that fund balance versus taking away from it. We do have an unassigned fund balance at thirteen point five million. I know sometimes I think people think that seems high. I just will remind you that we do try to keep around the three months of operating within that, even during the budget process. And that would equate to around seven, six to seven million is our standard, three to four months of operating. So, it's healthy, but it's also within, kind of within its means. Let's see here. The next fund we'll look at is the Park and Recreation Fund. This fund did decrease its fund balance by around five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I will say though, that our revenues saw a positive increase, but our expenditures also went up. This was anticipated. I think we knew that the ICE Arena operations were coming on, and we didn't quite know what it was gonna, gonna end up. We do have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of cash that helps to offset that, just in terms of when we knew the ICE Arena was coming on. I don't know if everybody remembers, but we established that one million dollar kind of cash flow to help out in these first coming years, and so, we are using those. The capital improvement fund, we decreased our fund balance by one point five million dollars. This was anticipated during the twenty-twenty-four budget process. We did increase the street improvement budget quite significantly. I will also say that we do plan to carry over in expenditures another one point seven million into twenty-five. So, that is where, when we do our capital improvement budget, that long-term budgeting, that long-term planning is, is very important. We also have an unassigned balance in that fund of a little over nineteen million. I think what I can say, these are, have all been considered our major funds for the year. I guess the little piece that I will give is, one of the goals of municipal budgeting is that you do want to have a conservative budget while still providing your services and maintaining your infrastructure. I know we talked about, there's been some conversations with, you know, sales tax coming in under. Having those healthy reserves, that's why we keep them as healthy as we do. We're, we're very reliant on our sales tax and our property taxes. So, I feel comfortable with where we ended twenty-four, and now we just continue to, to look into twenty-five. A few other funds that I will talk about is our BBB fund, the Bed, Board, and Booze. That one did see a five percent increase in its tax revenue and increased its fund balance by a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So that shows a really healthy, healthy fund balance in that. The Prairie Lakes Wellness Center Fund, that one did decrease its fund balance by a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Had strong revenues, but the expenditures are going up. That's, that's a fund that we talked about last year that we do need to continue to watch. It's kind of where we're, we're trying to get it to always maintain it just in the black. But it is very dependent on the memberships, so that one is also heavily supported by the capital improvement fund for any of those improvements that are necessary to the building. So we would like to see it maintain kind of on the operating side, its own fund balance. Then we switch over into the enterprise funds, that would be the sewer, electric, water, gas, airport, and solid waste funds. Each of these has seen an increase of the revenue over expenditures, so everything here is looking good. We do know that we, part of the revenue increase in the sewer and water is those little bit higher surcharges that we've done for those bigger SRF loans. We have some pretty big projects coming in, sixty million dollar project right now within the, the sewer fund. So the, the revenues are there. I, sometimes I think when you see the fund balance, you kind of think that there's a lot of extra, but some of that is just us building up to cover those debt payments that will be coming as soon as we close out those loans. On each one of those spreadsheets, you do see what the breakdown is of the debt. So we do our governmental debt, has a fifty-nine point eight million dollar balance of debt, and our enterprise funds are coming in at twenty-two point nine. And our bank account balance at the end of the year is ninety-nine million dollars. So, if there's any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you. We will take motion to approve the statement. Can I get a motion? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Jurens. Councilman Danforth?
Yeah. Kristen, help me out here, and I should know this, but some of these loans that we get for sewer, as well as the, the sanitation part, don't some of those require us to make adjustments to our fees in order to comply and be qualified for those, those lower interest loans?
Yes, that is correct.
And so, I know that, I know that recently, there were some, some scuttlebutt or whatever on Facebook and everything regarding some increases. And what people need to understand is, is in order for us to, to get those low interest loans, you know, we're not just raising rates to do it. We, we have to do what's required in order to get those loans, in order to, to keep the infrastructure updates going. And so, I, I just wanted to make sure that my mind was right in regards to my recall of, of how we do that. But it, it's, it's not just swagging it and picking rates. It's requirements that we have, that we have to have qualifying rates in order to get the loan, correct?
That's correct. So like, I'll just use the sewer as an example. I'm required to keep, I keep a certain portion of our revenue, and it's said revenue for servicing debt. So essentially, I have to know what each one of those surcharge rates are, are for each loan, and then I have to provide that to the state annually to, to prove that I have enough debt coverage. And that is a requirement of each one of those loans.
If I may, Mayor, because I, I do know, it's been a while ago now, and I'm trying to think if it was utilities or whatever, but I think it was the utilities where they were doing some water treatment projects, where they were applying for grants and loans there. And what was looked at was, okay, what are you charging per, however, gallon or whatever they do? And we had to raise rates, because if our rates are too low, then we don't have the, we don't have the funds that we're charging enough in order to, to guarantee the, qualify and to guarantee the repayment.
Correct.
So, some of those are driven by that, which is what the case is with a recent, what, fourteen dollars between the two, I believe, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. Kristen, what, what would, what did we have in twenty-three for total cash and investments?
Twenty-three?
Or twenty-four? No, no, we don't need it to the cent.
Are you, you're talking, oh, you're talking-
Total cash and investment, you got ninety-nine million dollars.
I believe-
Where were we the year prior?
Hundred and four million.
Okay, thank you.
No. That is rounded.
Councilman Jurens?
So there's two items that the public is watching a lot, and so are we. Rec center and the ICE Arena. Those are, those are hot buttons in our community, and, and tonight, let's call it the Wellness Center. Yeah. Tonight, you're saying revenues went up, but so did our expenses. So, we had to jump into the reserve to cover that again.
Correct.
There's, there's a, there is a article published by a local radio station this week that really, I think, explains what the public feels about certain things and why certain expenses are, are, are there. So, I, I want the public to know that we're, we've got the eye on, on that also. The one, though, that we haven't seen, because it's really been in their first year of operations, is the ICE Arena. And our hope was that this would be a revenue and expense neutral, a break even hopefully, within a certain period of time. Have we seen those numbers yet? I mean, I, I, I wasn't quite listening close enough to what you said, that we expected to use this million dollar fund.
Yep.
We're using it. How much, and do we kind of feel? I know Dusty hasn't talked about it in a while, but he felt we could make this thing financially work.
So, without having the exact numbers, I can say that the, the anticipation was that we would kind of have this million dollars to help out the park fund, because the park fund holds the ICE Arena. I will say, we never meant, in the first years of operation, for it to completely be in the black. We've always subsidized the ICE Arena to a certain level, which is what we do, because we offer park and rec programs, like, you know, some of our own recreation programs. So I think the anticipation was that we kept that subsidy that we've had to the ICE Arena the same, while still having some more revenues to come in. So, what I can say is, we had a great year. Revenues were really strong out there. I think we maybe have a little bit of tweaking to do on some of our expenditures, just to kind of see where we're at, maybe personnel, things like that, where you just, you just don't quite know what you need. But I will say the revenues were extremely strong in the ICE Arena, and I think we, now we have a year under our belt, and I think it's just going to get better as we just kind of see, and we learn how to operate maybe more efficiently as well. But I think it was a very strong year. I think it's where we anticipated it being, so. being, so.
Yeah, and just to, I'd like to say something on the ICE Arena, and I know I've talked with our Officer Bob Zine about it. The idea would be to have a presentation upon what the first year was like, but we've got to wait some time to get all the numbers back. There's, there were so many things that were new to the city of Watertown. All I can say is, you can go out there and see the enthusiasm and the people and the amount of money that was, has been being spent and invested and circulating. But with that said, we also knew that it comes with a big expense, too. But anyway, we will learn more about that when we do a presentation upon that. Councilman Shuddy.
Thank you, Mayor. So on this, the Wellness Center and the ICE Arena, so with enterprise funds, there's a little more to the ICE Arena, right? There's, I mean, we can look at just the, in the red or black, as far as what it, what it brings in for revenue at that facility. However, the ICE Arena is also bringing in, you know, finding, you know, it's bringing the revenue into the community, right, where the Wellness Center really doesn't, right? That doesn't, I mean, I don't think people are driving...
But it does with swimming tournaments and basketball tournaments and...
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of things it actually does.
I'm thinking about treadmills and stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean...
That doesn't take long.
Okay, so I, I, I stand corrected, if you will. So even with the Wellness Center, then we could, we could also look at, there's, just looking at the hard, the numbers you're sharing tonight, there's a little more to the picture and what it does for our community. So just make sure we're aware of that, too, as a city, when we, when we look at those, those funds.
Councilman Danforth.
Yeah. I, I hope to be a little bit educational here, but I don't want to sound defensive. But when, when we were going through the process of planning for the Wellness Center, and then ultimately building that, our goal was that, that that paid for itself operationally, but we knew it wasn't going to pay for itself in regards to larger capital requirements. And I believe, at least historically, when I have asked for numbers, we're really close one way or the other from it paying its way operationally. Our goal was to establish a, a reserve that, that was for the replacement of, of the, of the secondary equipment, meaning the, maybe it's capital, maybe it's not, I don't know. But the equipment that's used there, the treadmills, the things that I don't use. But our, so our goal was to, to, for this thing to give or take a little from break even, pay for that replacement equipment, but not, not the million-dollar roof or whatever those numbers all are. It's not gonna, not gonna happen. How have we done, Kristen, in that regard? I know historically, when I have asked, we're very close to, to break even on it, or in the positive. Where are we at, just in general?
I will say that we were, we were doing great. We had actually built up quite a heavy fund balance. That's the reason you can see that we're still just dipping into the fund balance. We haven't had to have a transfer in this year. COVID really set the Wellness Center back. I think if it would have kind of stayed on track and it wouldn't have experienced that, I think that fund balance would have been much healthier. So then you kind of had this kind of leg, where you still had to run the, the building, right? You couldn't just shut everything down. So you still had some expenses and, and things that were taking place during that. So my goal is that we can start to see that fund balance build back up. And I think we can get there, you know?
When you say fund balance, you're talking about the, I call it a reserve?
A reserve, yes.
Okay. But let's set the reserve aside, and let's just talk purely about just our operational expenses. Nothing going into the reserve, right? From start to finish in a year, minus large capital, how is it doing? Is it close to break even?
Since COVID, no. It's, it's struggled. It has had, it has been in the red.
Okay. Isn't it fair to say that COVID affected our golf course? COVID affected our swimming pool?
Yes. And I think the reason that, you know, the Wellness, so those are some of the divisions that sit within the Park Fund. So they're not always so easy to, to look at, whereas the Wellness Center does just stand alone. So it's, it's kind of easy to pinpoint what it was. But, but yes, you are correct, that I think we maybe saw an impact to that, but I definitely think the Wellness Center really did see a hit during those. But it has been, it has not been in the black the last couple of years, but...
Okay. And I'm not sure, but you know, that's our goal.
It is, yeah.
And prior to COVID, I know we were hitting numbers that was, that enabled us to create that reserve, which, so working our way back there. But, and I, and I don't know the numbers right now, but it, what I had been told previously is, and I'm gonna just use this as a reference point, but there were about 28 to 32 weekends out of a year that there was some type of event being held there, whether that's swim meets.
Yeah.
Tournaments of some sort, volleyball, basketball, whatever it is, about 27, 28, 29 weekends that one or more of those days where we had an event. And if you go out there, a little wrestling event, if you go out there when, when they're having a wrestling youth AAU meet, or you go out there when they're having a swim meet, and just walk through that facility, the parking lots are completely full in that facility, that the four-room, or four-gym room is packed with people. And it's really a great thing to see in our community. You don't see that if all you do is drive by the place or, or read about it on, on Facebook, right? To go there when they're, when these things are taking place, it's, it's a wonderful thing to have into our community, because as it's referenced, it's not all measured by, by our bottom line, meaning the cities. It transcends out into the community in hotel rooms and restaurants and gas stations and, and so there's, there's more, much more to it. So, anyway.
Councilman Beeler.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna tag onto that just a little bit, too. Of course, we, we do see a lot of revenue for all those things that Mike had mentioned, but we don't want to discount the other positives that we get from the Wellness Center and the ICE Arena. But I mean, it's, I mean, look at all the old fogies like me that go up there and play pickleball all the time. You know, there's, there's activities for so many people, but we, we call it the Wellness Center. We call it that for a reason. But this was part of the greater initiative that we had for a quality of life in Watertown. You know, and we're always looking to try to draw businesses to this community, and to have facilities like that certainly helps us to get those people here. So there's a lot of benefits that, that come off, ancillary benefits that come from those facilities, lots.
Okay, any other comments? Let's see, where are we at here?
Got to see.
Need a motion?
Approving.
We got a motion. Yep. We will just take, do you want to call the roll?
Sure. Okay, Tupper?
Yes.
Beeler?
Yes.
Danforth?
Yes.
Holene?
Yes.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sorry about that. You caught me off guard there real quick. But now I'll go to see authorization to supplement the information technology budget in the amount of $46,850.
Hello, Council?
Director Boyle.
So at the end of last year, we started a budget, or not a budget, we had a project to upgrade our file storage infrastructure. The project ran into, it didn't get completed until after the first of the year, late January. Ended up getting the invoice late February. When I coded the bill, I asked for it to be put it, coded to the 2024 budget, but I missed a deadline there as well. And by the time I realized that those funds were budgeted to my 2025 budget, it was too late for carryover. So I'm just simply asking that those dollars be put into my budget, so I can...
Look for a motion. Motion by Peters, seconded by Shuddy. Any other discussion? Councilman Danforth.
Kristen, where will those funds be, come from?
These were part of the general fund, correct?
Correct, yep.
So essentially, we just missed the carryover process on this, so it would have been in one of those items that was allowable to be carried over, because it was for capital. So it will come out of the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Shuddy.
So, I'm not an IT guy, but on phones, there's reminders we can put on our phones for...
Hey now.
No, but yeah, we have to spend this anyway, so appreciate your work you're doing in that department.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else? Would you like to take the roll?
Okay, Tupper?
Yes.
Beeler?
Yes.
Danforth?
Yes.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerrons?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We are now on to Councilmember item announcements and introduction of topics for future discussion. Councilman Jerrons, you wanted to get back on something?
Uh, yeah.
The Mr. Thompson had?
Yes, Mr. Thompson did take off, but that's okay, because I read this AI report that came out. Until tonight, I didn't feel like, I didn't know how many of you had received that report. So a few of you have it now. Whoever I could find on, on the same platform that he sent it to me on is how I've sent it so far. So Shuddy, you didn't get it, because you're not on that platform. Anyway, it did do a very nice job of highlighting some items, and he, he brought them up about, and he used AI. Any of us, any of us here can do that. Any of us in the, in the community can do that. And it pointed out some really, really interesting places. He, he brought up a couple of them. There's about three points that he, he made, and that he, he didn't do it. AI did it. And I thought extremely, extremely important. If anyone in the community and anyone on the city council, if this is surprising you, over the last couple of years, I have probably not been afraid to question expenses. And so this doesn't come as a surprise. But his AI research solidified some areas that we should really, really look at. And, and it was. It was, it was a couple items that are like, hmm, AI might be correct. That's, that's why I thought it was important to, to, to jump on what he was articulating and to send you, it's only nine pages, only took me five minutes to read, but I really thought it was important for, for the council to take a look at and, and highlight even more so than what he had available in his five minutes. So future discussions, it would be really interesting, whether it's in a work session or something, because that was really good information that he shared with me. Second thing is, I'd like to get back to, to the discussion of bringing our restaurant owners and our bar owners and our friends in front of city council, and, and to say that, based on the numbers, what we've been doing for the last many years, bringing them here, because some city councilmen wanted to ask them a question one time about a situation, I, I don't really agree with it at all. And I don't think any of those people that showed up tonight want to be here. I believe that discussion that we had tonight and learned could have been done in City Hall in a meeting where we're discussing. And I know we have to keep it public, but we, we could be discussing options and solutions to this somewhere else, other than in front of a microphone for an hour. There's numerous potential city council prospects for the upcoming race that have denied not getting into the race, because our city council meetings are taking two and a half hours. And I realize those of us here have made the commitment, it's okay. But, you know, they look at other towns, they look at other cities. They may be longer than that, but we should be done in an hour to an hour and a half. And without that kind of a public display of, of, I, I called it early, earlier, shaming. I mean, maybe that's what's needed to make it work, but we know the statistics haven't worked. They're, they're not saying that it's been working. So I would like to find out what other cities are doing. I'd like to find out, like Sean had one really neat new idea there, and there was a couple other ideas that, that, you know, could be used. It's just a hard, hard thing. And Annie was right on the money. She talked about the, the, they all believe they made a mistake here, but those fake ideas are everywhere. She's got a 19-year-old, I have a 19-year-old, and all of us know someone that's getting into all these bars anyway with, with a fake ID. But I'd really like to have a discussion about solutions, rather than bringing six, seven, eight business owners in here to have to get their names mentioned in, in the public to, you know, why did this happen? Oh, we're sorry. One of them, 82 years old. Really? She's got to come out on a, on a Monday night to say she was sorry, and I feel bad? Yeah, I applaud her, but I, I think there's better solutions. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further topics or announcements? Councilman Tupper?
Can I just comment on, Councilman Jerrons' comments?
You can, but just keep in mind that we're not debating a new topic.
Yeah, no. And I agree. I mean, here, the last thing I wanted to see with, with, anytime we got to do that. But it's also due process. They are owners of a license. It is a business, and everybody's upheld to, to high standards, especially when you own something that's, that's, well, you basically are renting that license from the Department of Revenue. You're their representative. So I just do not see any of them. And we've had times where there's been maybe one or two, but this is the worst time I've seen in years, Council. But I, I still believe that it's our job as, as elected officials, no matter how long it takes us in the night, to get our job done properly. And, you know, so be it. If, if somebody breaks the law, I mean, here, if you break the law, it's got to go in front of a judge. No matter who you are, you go in front of a judge. Doesn't make any difference who you are. So, and that's, or courtrooms are open to the public, no different than what a council chambers is. So, and not that I want to see them here, Glenn, but it, it is part of our duty to make sure that, that we help our police department, make sure that they can uphold their end of it also. So, thank you.
Councilman Shuddy? Any further announcements or topics for future discussion? Here, Nun, City Manager report?
I don't, but Justin has just a quick statement.
So there's a PSA that was sent out earlier announcing National Public Works Week, May 18th through 24th. The Public Works Department has six divisions, airport, community development, engineering, solid waste, streets, wastewater, 70 employees. And there's a Touch a Truck event on Saturday, May 17th, from noon to 2 o'clock. It's for people of all ages. I'm a big kid, so I love those big, big machines. And there's also a coloring contest that folk, folks can sign up for.
Will you also be partaking, partaking in the coloring contest?
I...
He wants you to draw at this stage.
No comment. Perhaps I, perhaps I missed it. Is the Touch a Truck event...
Oh, yes.
Okay. So, thank you. That actually is, that is a great event. Okay, so no more City Manager report. We do have a reason to go into executive session for both contractual and personnel issues. So I will take a motion to go into executive. We will not be taking action when we get out. Therefore, I will take a motion to go into executive right now. Made by Councilman Shuddy, need a second? Seconded by Councilman Danforth. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I'll just say goodnight in Watertown. We'll do a motion to adjourn at the end.